Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is being video recorded and broadcast live on Penfield TV's government access channel, which includes Spectrum Cable 1303, also online at PenfieldTV.org, and social media platforms, Facebook and YouTube via Town of Penfield Television. Following tonight's proceedings, the video recording will be available on the town's website and on streaming devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. Just search for Penfield TV in your device's app store, and it is free. If anybody wishes to address the board tonight regarding any public hearing matter, there's going to be several opportunities for that. One is folks can call this phone number here, and every once in a while you'll see me looking this way. There is a sheet if anybody calls in that will let me know if somebody's on the line. You can also send in comments electronically through the town's website at Penfield.org that we talked about before. And of course, if you're here in person, we will invite you up to speak about the application as well. Folks are also allowed, I don't usually say this, but they're allowed, once they see the agenda. We sometimes get emails or phone calls about the item even before the hearing starts, and of course, we store those on the electronic file, and we consider those as well. So, we like to point out every month that we think the town does a good job of making sure that people in the town, and frankly, in the community, are aware of what's on the agenda, so that they can come in and speak about it, or give us comments the other ways we've talked about. And we appreciate when folks do that, because we do want to have all the information before we make our decision. And how does the town do this? Well, it does it in several ways. One way is to prepare an agenda, and put it on the website, and post it here at the town hall for all to see. Another way is the town mails postcards, we've probably all received them, to people that own property within a certain number of feet of the subject of the application. You get a postcard that says, "This site at this address is under review for this matter. Call if you have any questions." That's nice. Gives you notice of what might be heard. If you're interested, you can call. Another thing that they do is the town requires applicants to post the signs in their yard saying this property is under review. Same thing, if you're interested in finding out more about it, you can call. And if you do have a question or comment, then you can show up, or you can email, you could call. So again, we think the town does a really good job of that, and we appreciate everybody's time in that regard. Tonight's meeting, we're going to start with our work session, which won't take very long. There, we approve minutes, or move to approve the minutes from the last meeting, and if we had any tabled applications, we would address those as well. We don't have any tonight, we have some minutes, but no tabled applications. And then, we won't need to take a break, I don't think, between the work session and tonight's hearings, so we will launch right into those. And what we'll do is we'll ask the applicant to come up to one of these tables and give us their names and address, and then, very likely, what we'll do, what we typically do is, there's been a board member assigned as lead on every application. That board member will walk the applicant through the application. Everyone has submitted a very thorough written application justifying their position for the request. We've reviewed them. We just find it easier for the board member to walk an applicant through, it makes it more efficient. We don't intend to limit people's time to speak by doing that. Everyone should know that they'll be given ample time to address the situation. But we just, as I said, find it more efficient to do it that way, and frankly, make it a little easier on the applicant as well. We think it works. So, having said all that, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under your, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you. And let's go to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes from the October meeting.
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, on the minutes, then, we have a motion to approve by Matt, and a second by George. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
I'll abstain, I wasn't here.
Okay. No tabled applications, so we will launch right into tonight's applications. May we have the first application, please?
Joe and Michelle Barbero, 2157 Penfield Road, Suite 9, Penfield, New York, 14526. Request approval for a conditional use permit under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.7-C1A of the code to allow the operation of a smoothie bar at 2157 Penfield Road, Suite 9. Property is currently or formerly owned by Wegmans Food Markets Incorporated and is Zoned GB. SBL number 139.02-1-2.3. Application number 25Z0036.
Hello, folks.
Hi.
Matt's going to walk you through your--
Do you guys just give your name and addresses, please?
Michelle.
Joe Barbero.
Michelle--
Sorry, Barbero.
Addresses?
For the shop?
No.
Oh, 24 D'Angelo Drive, Webster.
Cut.
24 D'Angelo Drive, Webster.
Great. So you guys are opening up a smoothie shop?
Yes.
All right? And it's going to be right near Target?
Yeah.
So, which storefront is it actually going to be in?
Speedy Cleaners.
Right there? Okay. And I assume you guys are going to be open very late and having raging parties right there?
All the time.
What are your hours of operation?
They're going to vary, I think it's late is five--
Eight to six, I think.
Eight to six, and then weekends, Sundays is going to be shorter.
Eleven to three.
Okay. And you guys do smoothies, and drinks, and bowls, and--
Refreshers.
Obviously, there's, it's, I know the parking lot very well, because we go to Target pretty regularly, but there's plenty of parking, ingress, negress, lighting. You guys aren't planning on any outdoor music, or concerts, or anything like that, right?
No.
Nope. How many employees are you guys going to have?
It's going to range, six to eight.
Yeah.
Okay. And again, obviously, there's plenty of parking for all of that. Oh, at a time, like working?
Oh, like two.
Probably two. Two, okay.
Sorry.
Yeah. Okay, total, you're going to have six to eight?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I really have no more questions. I can--
Any other questions from the board?
No, sir.
All right, let me look on my other computer. I don't see anybody on the phone, nor do I see any electronic comments, so I'll ask if anybody in the audience wants to speak about this application. No? Okay, then let's move to its consideration, starting first with the environmental issue.
All right, for the environmental, I would make a motion to declare this, and I assume it's type two, but I don't--
Unlisted.
Unlisted, an unlisted action, with a negative declaration.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Matt to declare it unlisted, and a second by Andres, and further to issue a negative declaration. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye. I would, for the, on the merits, I would make a motion to approve this. It's in a plaza that we all know very well. I think a smoothie bar is going to be a good addition to it. It's certainly not going to have, it's going to be in harmony with everything that's there. There's a cafe right around the corner, there's a Target that's got a Starbucks in it, and a Wegmans that has a cafe in it, so there's plenty of parking, plenty of ingress, negress, lighting. It's, I see no issues with it, so I would make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
All right, a motion to approve for the reasons stated by Matt, and a second by Andres. Further discussion? All those in favor, aye. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
When do you guys plan to open?
We're hoping February, March, but with the holidays, and so--
You never know.
Yeah. But latest should be March.
All right.
Good.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you there.
No.
You don't have to, no, you can go. Unless you want to hear the next application.
Right. I mean, it's riveting stuff.
The next application that is supposed to be on Zoom, we do not currently have them being called in.
Have a good night.
Okay, thanks. Good night. All right, let's take a recess, then. Somebody let us know when, if and when they're here, and--
How long do we give them?
Five minutes.
Okay, folks, we are out of recess and ready to proceed with the next application, so may we have that read, please?
All right. Insight Land Development, 28 Will upon Way, Penfield, New York, 14526. Request approval for a special permit for signage under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow subdivision monument sign with less setback than required under Section 250-10.16-B and Section 250-10.12-D of the code at 59 Wells Brook Lane. The property is currently or formerly owned by Insight Land Development and is Zoned R120, SBL number 094.03-1-45.1. Application number 25Z-0037.
Okay, thank you. All right, applicant, if we could have you identify yourself by giving us your name and address, and then Andres will walk you through the application.
Very good. Thank you all. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, appreciate your time. I wish I could be there in person, but I am in sunny Florida right now, and I couldn't leave. So, thanks for taking the time for this hearing. My name is Rudy Neufeld, I work with Insight Land Development, and I'm here to explain and answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, we're, I know I'm having trouble hearing you, so whatever you can do to amplify your voice, we would greatly appreciate it. You folks in the audience here, I hear about this application?
Is that better?
You want to come up?
Is that better?
I don't know if I can hear it any better.
We can sort of hear it.
You're, okay, all right, okay. All right, then, we'll proceed, but let's, we may remind you a couple of times to speak up, but go ahead, Andres.
Is that better, Dan? Can you hear me better there?
That is better, yes. Thank you.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Yeah. Again, thanks all. We made this application, in fact, we discussed this with the planning board when we applied for the subdivision, and as everyone knows, the entrance is only, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
The entrance is 60 feet wide, so it's a little bit constraining, and a couple of things we talked about with the board when we planned this was where the sign would go, and they also asked for some additional lighting for that street coming in, which we did, it looked good. So, we know it's a little close, but we are behind the right-of-way line, and because of the constraints, we put it where we did, and I can answer any questions as to why or how that came about.
Sure. So, just to clarify, currently, you're required to have 50-foot setback, and you are currently have a one-foot setback from the property line, requiring a 49-foot variance, from what I read here.
Yep.
And talk about the placement, or how it was chosen there, and let's say, not back on the first lot, that, as you drive in, where you see the first lot coming in on the left--
Yep.
Right next to the, like, right next to that light where it exists, why not there, where you would have had a little more space?
It could have been there, and I just want to explain, too, we're not required to, like, at the entrance of the subdivision, there's landscaping, we put streetlights in, none of that's required, it could just be grass, but it's important to us to have a sense of arrival, and quite a bit of money was expended to do the landscaping, and the rocks, and the lights, and it's for our residents. People want a sense of arrival, they want when their guests come, they want them to be identified where they live, and so we could have put it in there, but then, none of the guests coming there would see it. So typically, the residents like to have it where the guest can see it, and it gives them a sense of arrival. So, we certainly could have put it there, but we don't think it would have enhanced the development for our residents the way this does.
So, putting it back at the first lot as you pull in, would not be seen by everyone pulling in, or would be?
It would only be seen by the residents then, so if you're there for the first time visiting, we've got a number of Penfield residents that are anxious to move in, some folks from out of town that are moving in there, and driving by it, you wouldn't really get the sense of the neighborhood until you were in there. So, it was our thought, not so much for us, but more for the future of the residents and the long term of the development, that identifying their community from the street for the passersby and for the visitors would be, would be much better. So that, that was the thinking on that, and that's how we discussed it with the planning board as well.
Okay, so the planning board was aware of where the sign was, was going?
Yep, we did. We didn't know which side we'd put it on. We did discuss it with the chairman at length and some of the staff. We, at that point, made sure we're behind the right-of-way, which we are, and when we were discussing the sign, they talked about what kind of lighting it would be, they wanted some additional lights, so we had a couple extra streetlights in there, and that, that all was discussed. So, again, that money that we spent wasn't as much for us as for sales, as for the future of the community, and if you've had a chance to see any of ours, all of them have a pretty nice sense of arrival, and we think it looks good. We ended up also discussing which side, way back when. We put it on the side that it's on, great neighbors on both sides of my property there that were to work with through this whole process, and the farmhouse, which is the old house on the southerly side, that's much closer to the road, the other house is back about 80 or 90 feet. So, we chose that side, it screens their house, they have a couple windows on that side, so the sign, and then we have some beautiful arborvitae plants behind it as they mature, it will kind of screen the house and their two-bedroom windows, so that's why we chose that side of the road.
Understood, okay. And their sign is illuminated in the evenings?
It is, there's a, there's a light illumination on the sign from the front, and then, because the planning board wanted, that street's 200 feet long, so they wanted some lighting, did install two additional small residential streetlights. So, I don't know if your board has had a chance to see it at night, but it's quite, quite attractive, it looks really nice and welcoming.
Yeah, I was only there during the daytime, so I missed the lighting part. The one thing, we had a letter from a resident that discussed about the lights glaring out as you drive in, or, you know, as you drive by, the lights kind of shine out, and so I was just wondering about the direction of those lights, or if the direction of the light shining at the sign is shining into the house behind it as well.
You know, I haven't seen it at night yet, and they certainly should not be pointing out at the road, and I will be willing to meet anyone in the board, or any of the residents. If there's anything that isn't something I would like if I lived there, I'll be happy to make any changes that my neighbors, or any of the adjoining residents want to make it more attractive.
I just had a quick question. My question is, so, you clearly worked with, with the, the planning board, and you're familiar with, you know, doing these types of projects. What was the thought process about putting this in place before seeking the variance?
Well, I'm going to take the blame for that, because I know it was discussed, typically, they draw it on the plan, we talked about where it would go, the requirements had to have behind the right-of-way, and the sight distance, which the engineers checked for us. I wasn't aware, I've never, I've never really had a variance before, haven't had such a tight property, so I missed that step, assuming we had discussed it and had the approval. So, I will apologize for that.
What would it take to move, to move, just to relocate the sign back farther, in, towards, towards the entrance, so it wasn't seen as much from, from the roadside, or for, so as more as you entered the first lot, kind of right next to that light pole? Since, since you already have electricity there, what would it take to just relocate the sign to that point?
It, it could be, you know, we have some professional landscape, so it's designed to, you have plantings in front, the side, and then the arborvitae's in the back, so as those things mature, we feel that's the most attractive, again, the whole point of that and the money we spent really wasn't for us, we think that's the most attractive way, because now it's kind of for all the neighbors to say, hey, welcome to our community. If we put it on Lot 1 or 24, now it's in front of that particular house. So, we certainly can do that, but we thought this was the best approach.
I have a question. If they moved that sign, would it still be visible from the road?
No, you wouldn't be able to identify it at all. I mean, unless you knew where you were living, if you were a guest coming there, and then that's why we soft lit the thing, too, you're coming there in the evening, guests from out of town, or whatever, the kids haven't been there, you would not be able to identify that at all, unless you knew where it was, and that was part of the thinking of identifying it for my residents, too.
Is there a street sign?
There will be a street sign, yeah, the town puts that up eventually, but there will be a street sign. It won't be-- Hope that noise wasn't on my end.
So, I think the answer was, eventually, there will be a street sign.
There will be, yep, a typical street sign, like on all the other community streets, the town puts those up at their discretion at some point. It won't be lit, but there will be a street sign.
All right, I have a couple of questions about your interactions with the planning board and staff about this.
Yep.
Because honestly, we have some differing information on that.
Okay.
So, when, if you can recall, was, specifically, was this discussed with the planning board? The placement of the sign at this location?
I, I don't remember a date, we had so many meetings on this because it took so long, I know we discussed it with staff, and in fact, my, I'll take the blame for that, I, we discussed it enough, and then when we went to put it in, I thought it was on the plans, BME thought it was on the plans, but somehow it wasn't. So, I don't have a specific day where I said, hey, this is where we're going to put it yet, but it was part of the discussion right from the beginning. I can't sit here and say, hey, we had a stamped approval, but this is what it will be, but it was certainly disgusting, even BME staked it out for us there, because we all thought that, that was approved. But, that again, is, that is my shortfall, I will take the hit for that.
So, so why did, why did you think that it was approved to go in this location?
Because, and of all of our landscape sketches, we had it in there, thought it was discussed, and then when we pulled this stuff out, nobody could find where we drew it in, so, that, I guess I don't have a firm answer to say, yes, this is when, everybody said yes. We just made the assumption, it's only 60 feet, the only other thing we could do is, as was mentioned, bring it back to the Lot 1 or 2, which, which is not the end of the world, we would do it, we just didn't think that would be as good for my residents as what we have now.
Yeah, I, honestly, I'm not focusing now on what you think would be the better location for it, I kind of understand that. What I'm focusing on is your assertion that you've discussed this location with both the planning board and staff, because as I've said, my understanding anyway, is that no one at the town hall was aware of where this was going, until you had already started putting it there. But I want to make sure that you understand that, and I'll ask you again, you are saying that prior to you beginning to install this sign, that people at the town knew from you, or one of your agents-- knew from you or one of your agents exactly where this sign was going?
No, no, I will not say that, because we, again, made the assumption with the engineers that because we discussed it, talked about it, made the mistake that it didn't get on paper the way it should have, we went ahead and put it in. But this was a year and a half ago, when all these discussions started with the planning board, the chairman. So no, the clear answer to yours is, I did not, because I thought we had it all set. We went ahead and put it in. I did not go and say, boys, we're putting the stakes in the ground, do we have an approval? That was my mistake.
Okay, so at the time that you gave the directive for the sign to be placed, did you think that it complied with the setback requirement?
You know what? I did not know that the 50-foot was. We knew the width requirement obviously could never be met, because we only had 60 feet. The road, the road and right-of-way is almost that width. So we, the only thing that we were told, and again, this was my mistake, I should've checked that with the staff, is be behind the right-of-way and make sure that the site distance meets code, which that did. So, you know, we went forward on that assumption, and that was my responsibility to not check that more clearly.
Right. Well, I guess I'm glad you're accepting the responsibility, because I don't, I can't imagine that it's anyone else's responsibility.
Nope, nope, it is not. In fact, I was home and was so interested in making that thing look perfect with the bouldering and everything they put in, I was there myself. So that, I'm not saying anyone else gave us the thumbs up, we just assumed, along with BME, that we had it, and that was my, that was my bad.
Yeah, and just another thing about the communications with planning board. If I were to go back and watch every planning board meeting on this property, are you telling me that I would hear at some point discussions about this sign and where it would go?
I don't know what's recorded. We had so many meetings. We had pre-meetings before. BME had a number of meetings with staff on PRC, so I won't say, and I'll withdraw that statement if it sounds like yes on January 2nd. We showed them a sketch. It was, it's always part of our discussion, because that's a major part of the marketing for the people, is a beautiful sign, so.
Yeah.
Let me retract that if the implication is, on a certain day, somebody said, go ahead. We just, we thought we had everything we needed, and that was our mistake.
I guess it wouldn't surprise me if the sign and the presence of a sign was discussed. But an exact location discussed such that somebody would walk away from a meeting thinking that that constitutes an approval, especially frankly, someone that's been in the business of building homes in the town of Penfield for as many years as you have been. And this, I believe, is not the first time that you've come before this board after the fact. So, you know, there's no doubt in my mind that you either know the answer to setback questions, or you know how to find the answer before a shovel's put in the ground. And I say that not to be disrespectful, but just to point out to everyone in this room and watching that now, the zoning board is in position where you're asking for a huge variance, but you've already built it. And it puts us in a position of having, after the fact, to rule on an application, which is not an easy position to be in. And I'm not saying that it would've been granted if you had come in here and asked for it before you built it. But frankly, it, in my mind, again, raises issues of credibility on every aspect of your application, including...
Understood.
...why that's the best location for aesthetic purposes or identification purposes. Because, to be just quite candid, I can't believe that you weren't aware of the setback requirements, the requirements to come to this board, or weren't aware of where to go to find the answers to the question. And again, I don't mean to offend you, but I, that's where I'm coming from, sitting in this chair, and my fellow board members can...
Well, I'll also add that if it was brought up to the planning board, the planning board knows and would condition the approval on getting the variance for the sign. I mean, that's 99.9 times out of 100, that's what happens.
Right.
Especially when there's just a little space for it.
Correct.
At this spot.
So, you know, understanding that you think this is the preferred site to achieve all the purposes of having a sign, one thing I would ask you, I don't know if Matt or Andres or George or somebody already asked you, but can we pull the picture up, the photo of the sign again? By the way, this, those boulders, they're not pertinent to this application at all, are they? Okay.
Nope. The boulders are being...
So for you to pull that sign out and move it back 49 feet to bring it in compliance, again, not the preferred, it doesn't, you can't see it from Shoe Craft, perhaps all of that, but the sign serves another purpose, as you said, welcoming people to the neighborhood. Not necessarily just to identify the neighborhood, which I think a neighbor pointed out in an email, quite rightfully so, that soon this, these addresses will be on GPS, so a first-time visitor will be told by Siri or whoever where to make a turn into the property.
Yep.
So, you know, the identification for safety and driving and all that is a factor, but not something in my mind that's as important as it was perhaps 15, 10, 15 years ago. But having a nice identification sign for the neighborhood, that I can appreciate. But to me, that purpose would be served by having it 50 feet back, or 45 feet back, or 30 feet back. It's a, you know, a nice sign. People driving in would say, oh, this is a nice neighborhood, it's a nice sign. I totally understand that. But we have setback requirements for a reason. And Andy wants to chime in, he's given me the timeout sign there.
Yeah. Due to the way that the subdivision is laid out, I don't believe he'd be able to locate the sign in this area at all without the need for a variance.
Correct.
So anywhere down that long stretch would require a variance?
Yeah.
The same variance isn't going to change whether it's here or 30 feet down?
So the problem is, the sign's in approximately this area where my cursor is.
Mm-hmm.
The setback problem is north-south, so he's got to be 50 feet away from this property line and from this property line, and he's got to be 20 feet back from this, because this is where the right-of-way is. So he really can't put it anywhere in here without a variance. He can't even locate it on this property here without a variance, because it's not going to be 50 feet from the side property lines. So he would need a variance regardless of where he puts it. Maybe not as much of a variance, but a variance from the...
Okay, fair enough. I thank you for pointing that out.
And a variance on the, on an actual parcel in the back would have less impact than the, you know, on the Shoe Craft neighborhood than it would the development neighborhood.
Also a good point. So, okay. I think I've asked enough and made my points. Any other questions from the board here?
Yeah, you covered my questions. I'm good.
Well, actually, I do have one more. What is your estimate on what it would cost you to move the sign to reduce the setback?
Well, I can't, I can't get it to comply, because the whole street's only, the whole property's only 60 feet. So like Andy said, there's no way I could put it anywhere and comply without some kind of a variance. If we put it on Lot 1 or 2, there's, that would have to be, if I understand right, Andy, 50 feet off of those property lines as well. So that would put the sign in the middle of the front yard of one of the two homes, which just doesn't make sense. We would probably just dispense with the sign completely and hope GPS does their job.
Yeah.
And then if the, if the neighbors or the residents, it's going to be an HOA, so it'll be, you know, resident, all community. If they say, hey, why don't we have a sign here, then I could tell them, you guys petition the zoning board, and if you want to put a sign back and make one beautiful, you know, it would be up to them then. So I'm willing to do whatever the board would like.
I'd be agreeable with that.
I want to make sure I know what that is.
Well, in terms of, you know, if the HOA wanted to petition the board, you know, if they really wanted a sign that required a variance, I think they could make a strong case for it then.
Yeah.
Because you have a whole neighborhood asking for it.
Well, sure. I mean, if they wanted to apply, they would be free to do so. Okay. All right. Anything else from the applicant?
No. Andy, I guess I would have to, once you, the board decides what they'd like to do, kind of look at if we're going to put it on Lot 1 or 24. Are we going to be bound by that 50 feet, which doesn't make sense, because that's in the middle of somebody's front yard, which nobody would want, not myself or anybody on the board. So can we bring it in to that 60-foot right-of-way near my, the property line, so it feels like it's not in somebody's front yard? I guess that requires another meeting, or do we discuss that here at this one?
I don't see how you could place the sign anywhere without the need for a variance. You're not going to be able to be realistically 50 feet from all the residential property lines.
But I think what you're saying is, can I go for that variance? Would that be more appealing to this board?
Right. What, since we're all here listening to it, if you say...
Be less disruptive to the Shoe Craft neighborhood? And so...
Does it need to be tabled?
I was going to say, I don't want to guess like 10, 15, I want to see it.
Right.
So I wouldn't be opposed to tabling it to see where...
I'd like to see a rendering, yeah, where he's going to put it, and, yeah.
Okay.
And do the actual math on what would that variance be? Yes, you're going to need a variance, but maybe it's 46.
Well, I think, I think it's always going to be 1.
Oh, it's always going to be 1.
It's always going to be 1, but it could be, it could be further off Shoe Craft, so it's...
It's less impactful.
Yeah, so it's less impactful to the community.
Got it.
All right, so let me just ask this. I don't see any phone-ins, and I don't see any electronic comments. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? No?
My questions were answered.
Okay, great. All right, then, let's move to the consideration here.
Do you want me, so for seeker, am I to declare this an unlisted action under seeker and also to declare it a negative declaration?
I'm anticipating a motion to table, so typically, do we do the seeker?
Do we do that first, or do we table?
Go ahead with seeker.
I think if you're going to table it, I think you'd just make a motion to table.
Okay. Then I will move, that we table this application and allow the applicant to come back with the exact location of where he'd want to put it on Lot 1, so that we can get an actual determination of what the setbacks would be.
Second.
All right. Did you hear that, applicant, the reason for the tabling?
Yes, I did. That's fine, thank you for that. We'll take a look at it. I'll get with Andy when I get back, figure out where it could be, maybe do a quick sidewalk, him and I, so it makes sense for the future residents, and then if that makes sense, we'll put it there. And the nice part about that is that expensive sign will at least be owned by the HOA eventually when I'm done. And if they wanted them, go ahead and move it back to the desired location, I would let them petition the board. I'm totally okay with that.
All right, we got to take a vote on the tabling. So we have a motion to table for the reasons stated, and a second, all those in favor.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. Have fun in Florida.
Thank you, ladies.
Enjoy the weather.
All right, for that oversight, and we'll make sure it doesn't happen on the next one coming up.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. All right, that was the last application on the agenda, so I'll just say, everybody have a happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Go Bills.